Welcome everyone, if you please stand if you're able for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Do a roll call? Please?
Pretty please.
Perry?
Here.
Eaton?
Here.
Huang?
Here.
Boslufer?
Here.
Wegman?
Here.
Mayor Gardner?
Here.
Skatulski is absent excuse.
Moving on, we actually have a full agenda here with some decisions to make. Do I have a motion for items A through C?
I propose a motion to approve, oh, never mind, I propose a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through C as presented, reading, waiving the reading. Alright, I'm not making no more motions.
I'll support that.
We have a motion, we have support, any discussion? All in favor?
It wouldn't be, it would only be in jest.
Thank you for being kind, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carried. Moving on to Bills of Morse, do I have a motion?
Yes, sir. I propose a motion to approve Bills of Warrant 14215 paid in the amount of $2,824.98 and Bills of Warrant 14216 unpaid in the amount of $15,664.67 and the Visa in the amount of $2,609.65 as presented, waiving the reading.
Support.
We have a motion, we have support. Any discussion or questions on those? Now we'll go to a roll call vote.
Boslufer?
Yes.
Huang?
Yes.
Wegman?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Eaton?
Yes.
Mayor Gardner?
Yes, thank you very much, motion carried. We have no presentations tonight, we'll move on to the mayor's report. We're talking about streets today, now I met with Dean Fredericks today, I'll go into a little more detail later, I actually wrote this up, my report before I met with him. We met this afternoon to prepare an RFP, request for proposals for repaving Allen Cove, the Gania Road from the Allen Cove Bridge to the bridge deck over I-75. As we talked before, the road is beyond normal repair, it's going to take some significant work to even make it better than a gravel road. I met with Dean today to prepare that RFP, it will involve taking some core samples, laying out the project, looking at the terms we need to offer in that RFP. He is going to look that over and send us an estimate for what it's going to cost for his services and then we'll bring that to council action. That's a preliminary work we have to do before we can put that up for bid, otherwise if we just say we pave a road, that could have a myriad of different reasons and we'd get a lot of different quotes for a lot of different kinds of work. So he'll put it together, spelling out exactly what the specs are and what exactly we're looking at. This is our first road project that we sponsored in a long time. Trying to decide which road we need to repave is not an easy task, it's been a long time working through our real, our financial crisis. We do have some funds built up in the major road fund and the local road fund, these are two separate accounts. We have three major roads, or actually four major roads, they'd include Harold Drive, Lunapier Road, most of Lakewood Avenue and Erie Road. And the Act 51 money for major roads can only go to those streets and then all the rest of the streets in the city are local roads. And we have two different accounts, we have two different pots to draw from, we just can't use them interchangeably. I believe we will have enough money to do Gania Road. If you prioritize by how bad the road is, how many people travel on that road, kind of weigh it that way, how many, you know, you try to get the most, serve the community the best and fix the worst roads. And Gania seems to be the one that is really in crisis state right now. I would love to do Harold Drive, it's in terrible shape, that's a whole other project and we do not have the funding for that. The good news is however, that the state of Michigan legislators agreed on increasing the funding for local communities and local roads. If you look, they did a lot of work at a federal level, then they brought it down, they fixed a lot of state roads, put a lot of money into state roads. I was really hoping that they would continue it and they have, to down to local roads in the community. So we're looking at some increased funding there that will help, it will get us out of the woods by any means, but it will really help going forward. Now is the best time to do the planning, have projects shovel ready, and this is a preliminary thing that we need to do. So I'm pleased with moving forward on that. In other, other news, I received an email yesterday about ARPA funding, that all of the ARPA funding for communities is being audited, we can expect a lot of scrutiny. It's a very troubling note given the things that are going on in federal funding right now. I sent a note to John Lamachia of the Michigan Municipal League and he did reply, they've had a lot of inquiries about that and they plan on supporting us to make sure everything goes well. We're up to date on everything as far as we can go, we have to put in our final report into a portal that is supposed to open at the end, towards the end of March. Now it has not opened yet, now they're saying April 1st, but we'll have a limited time when that portal opens up to submit everything that, all our projects, everything we voted on before the obligation deadline, we just can't report what that, what those obligations are until they open up that portal. So we'll be following that closely, I am concerned about it, but we'll work with the Michigan Municipal League and they vowed to support communities. And then if anybody they see that hasn't submitted, they will call directly and reach out to them. It's, it's very important to maintaining our funding, we did spend all of our ARPA funds, so they're obligated and spent on projects, we just have to list them and report them that way as such. Any questions?
Probably more a comment, it seems interesting that they're already auditing before everybody puts in their final reports?
Yes, it's, I'll be honest, it's troubling to me, you know, they are looking for any thing that they can find. I think we're in better shape, there are some communities I know that, I think their obligations were a little bit shaky, there are things you can do and they didn't really, you can obligate that money to a subcontractor without a solid plan, we didn't do that. We have a very solid plan, in fact, we can list all of our projects, get them in and close them out. So I think we're in good shape that way. We're just, we'll see how it goes moving forward and get everything in and get the report submitted. Any other comments or questions? Moving on, we have the police report, I saw the chief here, if you'd like to address council with your report, it's always good to have it live.
Good evening. Manpower is still at six, I completed one background on applicant Monday and I forwarded that to M. Coles, so hopefully we should hear back within a couple of weeks, which M. Coles is slow on that response. Next application should be done by next Monday, I have an appointment in Detroit to go through his personnel file in Detroit and then I should be able to complete that, send it off Sunday, Monday night. And then we actually had a girl from Monroe express and fill out an application, she's also from Detroit, so we actually have three open applications right now, which is amazing and well needed. I haven't started hers because I was finishing the other two, but I should start hers next Tuesday. Dynamic, we're still receiving a few calls, not as often about them dumping and loading and the noise. Vehicle maintenance, 780, it was a blessing, it was been down for about two months, I thought it was the catalytic converters, everybody said it was the catalytic converters. It was actually the battery sulfur smell coming from the batteries, it was this frick acid, it was venting as it was charging and smelled horrendous and we, everybody thought it was catalytic converters, it was only the battery, so we put new battery in it, it was cheaper to fix, instead of about $1,000, it was $200. So thank goodness for that, it's back in service at that day, we're still looking for donations and grants to purchase a new patrol vehicle. I think Dave Weaver's beating his head against the wall trying, he's looked into about everything, Department of Agriculture and everywhere, but he hasn't found one that we qualify for. The boat launch at the pier, you know, the temperature's getting higher, the walays are coming in, a couple of weeks ago there were a lot of fishermen on the pier and then they all disappeared, so I guess the fish disappeared. But they were there, they checked their parking permits and everything, they were buying them, our president's always helps that, and officers are stepping up patrols in those areas. Boat ramp's still pretty low, the water is really low at the boat ramps, I don't even think they can get a boat in there right now, but they are fishing a little bit there. Thanks Dave Gouts in the parking committee, they were able to establish the kiosk, not the kiosk, the online payment for the boat ramp, so they have a sign down there and they're able to go on, so that's a good thing for us and the boaters because it's better access for everybody. And then they see the sign and they realize they have to pay instead of like driving by the DPW and seeing the little onyx like, oh, pay here. So we thank Dave and the parking commission for taking care of that, I heard it was a horrendous endeavor to try to bury a post out there because of the gravel and cement and I guess it was a dump at one time and he was digging, but he had to get a backhoe to actually dig a hole for the post, so that's how bad it was out there. Blight, if you noticed in the packet, there wasn't a blight report, sort of, I'm going to start a new one, my officers are going around and I'm going around, sort of compiling all the old and new issues in the city with the blight, we're actually looking at some building ordinance violations too with Mike Dembski, so we'll probably address those. We have a newsletter coming out, Charlie, was the newsletter coming out?
About three weeks.
Three weeks, I know he gave me a time limit to it, and we'll address it then, we'll start sending some letters out to the houses, or that way, sending them out, I'll be handing them out to the houses, making them aware, a lot of them will be repeat offenders or maybe continuing offenders, so they will be handled differently and given different timeframes than some of the new issues ever seen, but we're going to get on this and get on it quick. I know the blight commission, I know that sort of, haven't heard anything since last fall, but it was sort of put on hold for the winter because winter's harder to do stuff with outside.
Actually, it was the ordinance that they were waiting on.
Okay.
And they didn't want to do anything with the committee until they had something enforceable on the ordinance, which...
Change ordinance?
Kind of, I guess that's still a question?
Yeah, it is with our attorney and I'll call him up and see some other issues in town have taken priority over that, but...
But with or without the blight commission?
Right.
Our officers are stepping up and looking into stuff. That's pretty much it, any questions or anything else go around there to know about the city?
The largest fish I've seen since I've lived here is washed up on the shore.
Oh really, how big?
He's a man telling a fish story.
I don't know, I was just working and watching out my window and some kids dragged it from the, from the water all the way up to the wall, it was about as tall as they were.
Say thanks. It's on his wall now. Thank you.
I will say we have had... Moving on, we don't have a fire department report or a building report. The floor goes to Charlie to share some things with the training.
I did share a clerk report this time around. I did share a clerk report this time around just because of the week-long training, I wanted you to see the different topics that were covered, just so you know, on all these different topics, they focused specifically on how it impacts the work of a clerk. And so I just gave you some bullet points of key learnings and some next steps that I see.
That was excellent communication, thank you.
It looks like, and it sounded like a very, very worthwhile endeavor, not just for the training, but the contacts that you make during that and the call list of asking questions when you run into a jam on anything or when something pops out that clerks all discuss and it's, those partnerships are really important. Shout out to inclusional at Erie Township for helping us out with some of the election material, just a great network and it's, it's good to have those, those relationships and be able to help people and to get answers when we need them. Moving on to the committee reports, we don't have a DDA report, if there's anything you want to share?
Yeah, if I could give an update, so, DDA meets Tuesday, 7:00 PM, typically these packets go out on Tuesday before Charlie leaves, but we approved the meeting minutes from January with a header change because I had it listed as December. We moved from that January meeting, $50,000 to an interest-bearing account instead of just letting it sit and rot in the DDA fund. We created a DDA Byline TIF Ordinance Update Subcommittee, of which Connie Cole is leading with Joe Bezinski and Dave, why am I blanking on Dave's name, West, sorry. And they're tearing through it, there's, there's a fair amount of revisions that we'll need to do and they're comparing it to like municipalities. Our last meeting, we moved to support the upcoming Parks and Rec Night Market, should be sometime in September, so DDA will be collaborating with Parks and Rec again on their night market.
Very good. Any questions? Yep, it's really good to see the work and the progress there and they are, they are working hard. Flood, we don't have a report, but I can report that we got a call today that the pumps that we had on order are ready to install, they scheduled, I believe, they wanted to come out today and start working on it, but it was middle of the day and Dave needs to be around and he knew that would go way past his time to be available besides we had to go down and talk to our engineer about the road. So he scheduled for, I believe Friday, and Dave will oversee that with Kennedy. One, one pump is ready, the one that goes into First Street Park, the other one is still waiting on parks, and when, as soon as that's ready, they are eager to install that. Parks and Rec, we have no report. Planning Commission, we do have a public hearing, two public hearings scheduled for the next planning meeting. Those, that information is posted, I encourage everyone to look that over and give your input, this is your chance to talk about it and discuss it and let your view be known publicly at the, at the meeting. Anything else that I missed? Moving on to new business, City Hall Plumbing, Sink and Bathroom Repair quotes. There are some options even beyond what, just picking one of those three quotes that we have before, you notice there's, there are three quotes there, one is significantly lower than others, however, there are some problems with that one, namely they're not licensed for Michigan to do the installs, they're only licensed to repair, so they really aren't qualified legally to do the water heater installation. They are, they are certified and registered, licensed for plumbing repairs, they could do replacements or the plumbing repair under the sink, but they couldn't do the whole job. And that, that quote did come in lower and, but I see red flags there. Looking at the other ones, you can see, the other two are very close with Thompson Plumbing and the Leroy Plumbing and Heating. They are very close. I like the Leroy quote, there are some stipulations in the other one that, one of them is that they quote condensate to a floor drain, but there is no floor drain in that room, so that would, that would involve some other plumbing that's not listed here and it does not include any kind of electrical hookup, we would have to pay again for the electrical supply. And the other one is a quote for the whole job and it's actually a little bit, they're close, but the, the one that quotes the whole job, which is Leroy Plumbing and Heating for $7,243, is actually the middle quote and the lowest if you don't count the one that is not licensed to do the work. And they did not disclose that until after submitting their final offer there, after we discussed a little bit. The option we could do is go just, well, we could hire one just to do the repairs and then contract the water heater out separately, but I think we're going to be near the same price. Any questions on those three quotes there?
I do have a question, why are we, refresh my memory please, why are we replacing the vanity and the trim and all that?
Because they're, they're all really old and in terrible shape. The, you could get away with just, you gotta run new plumbing in there anyway, the actual replacement of the vanity and the sink are pretty cheap compared to the rest of the job and this stuff's probably going to break and fall apart and both companies told us the same thing, that they can't really guarantee, and it's, it's about time, you know, they're, they're really old.
So there's two bathrooms in there, men's and women's?
There's two bathrooms, what we're going to do is make one a unisex and we'll be able to open up the door on that, if we want to do some carpentry work with minimal plumbing changes, we can make that ADA compliant, it would involve the carpentry work, not the, the plumbing work would be pretty much set, we'd have to move the vanity over a little bit, but it would, we could make it compliant, there's no way we could make two bathrooms there and make either one of them ADA compliant. So my recommendation is just make it a unisex bathroom, it's the way it's being used now because the one's out of order and it has been done, that's why we've been using it that way for a long time, and that would be my recommendation rather than make two of them that are substandard.
Not seeing a vanity in the Thompson one as well.
Yeah.
You're right, yep.
Yeah, that's why I was asking.
I'm good.
Any other questions? Okay, alright, we have breaking news, budget amendments, we're not in the council packet, you said?
They're not emailed.
Okay, yeah, I was going to say, yep, that's why... I've got mine right here.
We can pass mine around.
I did see it in the packet that you emailed though.
So it's not, there's not a hard copy, but it is here, I got it right in front of me, if anybody wants to look at it, we do have. But keep in mind, there's a budget amendment for major roads, when we did the repair at Evans Drive and Lunapier Road, it was an emergency repair that we did and we have to cover that because we went over budget. And we may be doing, I don't know of any more before the end of the fiscal year, but that's what that one's about, equipment, maintenance, fire department did some repair work that went beyond what their budget was, but they needed to get their truck fixed.
Was it a damage or a failure?
I see it was engine work and I didn't talk to the chief and find out what it was, probably repair, because our trucks are old, they're, they're really old.
Sorry, I was back on the drainage.
Oh, on the drainage?
The road.
It was repair, it was probably accelerated by trucks running over.
Kind of my point.
Yeah, but it was old also and it, and it needed to be fixed and we can work that out, we are involved...
Enough said.
Yeah, careful how much I say that.
Yeah, enough said.
But we are involved in some litigation, it, it needed to be fixed, we couldn't leave it the way it is.
Yep.
And we have to pay for it. New equipment for the treatment plant, it's a refrigerator they have to have, it's a commercial refrigerator they required per their licensing, so that's a lot of money to spend for a refrigerator, but that's the, that's the one they need and the commercial refrigerators are very expensive. The final one is a building maintenance for City Hall, our time to pay for our bat removal, our bat relocation, we didn't remount, we evicted them, we did not kill any of them, we just found a better place for them to live besides City Hall. And we knew that was coming up too, and so that is in the budget amendments, any questions on that? Now, the other one that's going to be, take a little bit of time here, is the ordinance number 211, Article 35, electric vehicle charging infrastructure. For our building code or per every building code in the state, if something is not addressed in your building code, then it's not allowed, so it's good to have regulations, you know, some kind of control in your building code instead of just kind of working things between the cracks. It's really time to address our building code on vehicle charging infrastructure, having an electric vehicle and installing a charger with a permit. I understand the importance of this, another reason to have this in place is because we were, received a nearly $400,000 NEVI grant, North American, or no, a National Electric Vehicle Infrastructure Grant to install four chargers, eight plugs at the BP station and they, they're starting the engineering work, onsite engineering, the engineer for the company that's going to do the install stopped in the City Hall, we went down and looked it over and did some measurements and calculating where they're going to bring the power in, how they're going to do that. uh, how they're gonna do that. So we really should have our ordinance in place before that time. It's not, um, we, we have plenty of time to work with. Uh, it's not like they're gonna have that thing installed in a, in a week or even a month, but we should have something in place to, to cover that when they go through pilot, you know. Always keep a spare just for that reason. I'll get it later. So, uh, Council of Wakeman pointed out some things and had some questions on there. Uh, what you saw in your packet was the one that we read over before. And I actually marked that up and did the red line through. I didn't want to just take it completely out. I wanted to keep a record of what we changed since the first time we looked at this and tabled it. But it made it kind of confusing too. So the, uh, most of it's unchanged. Uh, I have a copy of Council of Wakeman's note here and the things that he wanted to address there.
Need me to pull it up?
Yeah, skipping down to G, I think was your first one, right? Yeah, that'd be good to.
Yep, G. G and J.
Yeah, and I see you wrote publicly restricted access. Uh, I, looking at that, the way we read electric vehicle charging station, private restricted use means an electric vehicle charging station that is privately owned and, and, and then you said publicly restricted access. Do you think that reads okay with privately owned and with restricted access? Does that clarify that? If you, you, you wrote in publicly.
Well, the main reason I question it is because if you, you went down farther.
It says publicly owned.
There's, there's a section two there, publicly owned and restricted on that letter G.
Okay, yep. And one, and I, I know what the difference is. I know what the intention is there. One is considers, you know, residency, you know, residence, you know, my house, for example.
But the intentions are, um, different than what people actually read and we get in trouble like that.
Uh, well, I see it as charging station. I'm, I'm describing mine now privately owned with restricted access. I mean, it's, you can't, it, it, it's owned by me and there's no, the public is not allowed to park in my driveway and use my charger. And, but I'm good with publicly restricted access too. You want to keep it, we can use, we can use either word. Are you?
I'm contemplating. Give me a minute.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I, I, I'm good with either one.
I guess I'm good with not having publicly in G, but I still like publicly in J.
Oh, yes, yep, we can do that. Okay, so it'd be going back to G privately owned and restricted access. Are you good with that? Okay, all right, we'll go with that. Moving down to J, kind of the same thing. You want publicly in there. Public marked space is identified use for exclusive. I would like to add, when, since you brought it up, uh, parking while charging an electric vehicle. And the intention of that one is, and you know, we, we did copy this from others. And I know there's a thing called icing, a charger spot. ICEE, internal combustion engines, those are dirty words for people that own EVs. If you're an EV snob, I, I have both, so I don't go that route. But people park a gas vehicle in a charger parking space and they do it all the time. And it's really annoying when you look on your app, you go to this space, you want to publicly buy some electricity from whoever owns that charger and you can't do it because there's a gas vehicle parked there. If you don't have anything in your ordinance restricting that, you can put a sign up, but there's no enforcement. You have no teeth. So you can't write a ticket or anything. The person just has to go somewhere else. And the, whoever owns a charger misses out on that revenue. Uh, people get annoyed about that. So this covers, uh, and it defines a space as for the space in front of a charger that you park a vehicle to charge. And I like adding while charging in there because it doesn't guarantee you a spot. The common courtesy is to move your car if you're not charging. And it's important to do that because when I look on my app, if there's a vehicle there, I can't reach a charger. And that happens too. And if we don't have it specifically spelled out that you're not allowed to do that, then there's no enforcement you have.
That is kind of spelled out elsewhere.
Okay.
As a general, as a general, um, condition.
So I, I, I have an electric vehicle and one of the things that kind of deters that or, or the sitting of a, of a completed, um, charge is just a levy per hour cost. So when I go to Ann Arbor, for example, and I charge and it's done, my phone pings and says, you're not gonna be charged $10 an hour while you're in the spot. It's detected that you're done charging.
Yes.
Stuff like that.
Yep, yeah, there is a fee on most chargers. If it's plugged in, then you're being charged that fee.
Not always.
Yeah.
Not always. It, it'll detect the amperage draw.
Yeah.
And if it's low enough, you'll be charged.
Yeah.
That's the other piece.
Okay.
And that's a section later on that I wanted to add to. I have my own notes.
Okay, but the, the intention of that is to give you some enforcement power. If you have somebody in there.
That's fine.
So I'm good with that definition there. And we will put these all together because we can only do the first reading and then we pass it to a separate meeting. So we can mark things up and present.
Right.
What we agreed to tonight in one clear, clean form.
Right.
I have a question.
Yes.
Is there any, um, talk or plan going forward of having any of these charging stations being city-owned and on city property in paid parking places that we currently have? Um, because if so, we should probably include something in here that talks about whatever they're going to be paying to charge their vehicle and then also our pay for parking system too. If, um, paying to charge your vehicle cancels out the paid parking system or if they have, are required to pay for both.
That is a great question. And we do look, we looked into that. I've looked in it, at, looked into it before and there are programs where you can get grants to put in chargers. And one of the stipulations is that it can't be a paid parking spot. Now, we could buy a charger and put it there.
And you could probably include the parking fee and with the charging fee in some way? That way it's all?
I've heard that you can do that, but I've never seen it outside of a garage that you don't pay to get into the garage first and then go pay. I never saw the parking charged through the charger. I've heard it can be done, but I've just never seen it in practice. And I've explored a lot of chargers. Uh, have you ever seen that where your parking is included when you plug in?
Not, not when it's unplugged. It's, it's typically a gated lot, either a gated service lot or, or a parking structure of some sort in which you take a ticket and then you're also paying.
Yeah.
No, I've not seen it on the app itself, but I.
But regardless, we, this ordinance doesn't cause, cover anything about cost, charges or anything like that. So I don't think we have to consider that for, for this anyway.
Right.
If you're saying one was in general, that's a good one.
That's a great question. And, and our situation is, uh, we have to weigh, if somebody comes in without a get, uh, we have a parking spot there that somebody could pay. If we were full, we would lose that parking spot unless it was somebody who was paying to charge. So I've weighed it both ways. Um, I'm all for EVs, but I'm all for paid parking too. So it is something that is on the table, we can think about it. And Erie does have, they got their chargers first. Um, in fact, I was the first one to use it, so I got over there. And, and they do have, but they don't have paid parking.
So what?
They are generating revenue with their chargers.
With us having gotten the grant and then it was chosen to put these charging stations at the BP, who retains ownership of them?
I believe BP does. There's different programs. We get the grant for the location and then they work out the details with the owner, which is really what caused the delay there. The previous management was just kind of, they wouldn't really commit to it. And the new management, uh, said, yes, we, they're all for it. And that's when it started to move along. It's really, they, they've wanted Luna Pier from day one. It's an ideal site, it really is. Being an EV traveler and doing road trips, this is an ideal spot, especially if you can go down to the beach and look, um, you stop in, um, it doesn't take very long to charge. So by the time you got to the beach, looked at it, walked back, your car would be done. But it's, it's a great location because you can go in and use facilities. You can buy food at one of the restaurants around. It's, it's a, just a great location. And it's, there's a pretty big gap. Until Erie got there, there was really nothing between Toledo and Newport, Michigan. So it's, we've always been a big red dot on the planning map. So that's how we got it.
Could you, could you clarify? It's a level two, right? You said eight of them?
No, they're, uh, they're level three, DC fast chargers.
Oh, wow, okay.
Yep, yep, there's eight plugs, four chargers.
Eight plugs, four chargers. And we got them at, that price tag is pretty solid, actually.
Yeah.
That's, that's.
Yep, and, and Consumers was in it for day one. They, they did a study, they verified that they have enough. Uh, the, the grid will support that. And the infrastructure's in place, they just gotta tap into it. Uh, moving on.
Section 3502 permitted locations. Just looking for a clarification on the last part of that sentence in A.
When accessory to primary permitted use.
Yes.
Yes, that is building inspector speak.
Please define it.
Yes, that means, uh, it's, it's not a standalone thing. It's, it's something that the homeowner use to, you know, for your primaries. Uh, it's an accessory, accessory to your primary permitted use. You're in a residential area, uh, you have an EV and the charger is an accessory to your primary permitted use.
Got it.
Yeah, that's how that.
That makes sense now.
Yep. Uh, spelling fix, yep. A level two, it's not a le, all two. Um, good catch there. I read that several times and I put the word in that I wanted it to say, even though I didn't make this. I'm not here, but I won't, but I, I didn't catch it. Uh, is there enough provision below for businesses to, they, general signage regarding parking for customers only? Uh, I believe the question is yes, because what it is, it clarifies that EVs can park anywhere in the lot, but if they need to charge, they can park at the charger. That somebody can't say, well, no, you can't park an EV. Their parking spot's there. You only get that, that spot because it's marked. This says, no, you can use any, if you're just there to visit the chateau, for instance, if they had a charger, you can park in their lot, subject to restrictions that would apply to any other vehicle. So it doesn't give you any special parking privileges if it's an employee parking or any handicap or anything else. Is that what the question's about?
I don't think so. So if a proprietor says this is for customer parking only and somebody just wants to pull in and charge, but not patronize the business is where I'm coming from. Does this ordinance allow for that is what I'm saying? That's kind of the way it's reading to me.
Generally, if somebody wants to use that charger and, and not go into the business, generally that's allowed everywhere I've gone because they're, they're getting paid for, I'm a customer when I, soon as I plug in. I'm, I'm paying them. And I'm sure they would rather have me paying for electricity than have an empty spot there because I'm not allowed, I'm not going in to buy anything from the store.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Um, on, on that note, I, I, I had a fair amount of just grammatical revisions, but on that note, I actually had a suggestion on maybe some phrasing changes. Um, I said, uh, electric vehicles may be parked in any space distinguished for public parking, subject to any and all restrictions that apply to other motorized vehicles. I think read better than what we had there for the, uh, the last sentence, number two.
I agree, I agree.
Yep, I like what you said. If you write that down, say, or say it again and also sit in it.
Yeah, yeah, um, you, you want me to read it off again?
Yes, please.
Okay. Electric vehicles may be parked in any space designated for public parking, subject to any and all restrictions that apply to other motorized vehicles.
Does everybody like that?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I will, if you can.
It's in the video.
Forward it to me and I'll make sure it gets in there for our next read.
It's in the video, Jim.
Yep.
I'll, I'll pass it over. Good luck with my chicken scratch.
And Charlie can, Charlie listens to every word of that too, so. Like how I passed that one off. No. Uh, questions about possible opportunities or anything including, precluding the city from collecting even a small percentage fee?
You know, we were involved in the grant to get it put in through the city and that's the end of it. Is that, is that what we're hearing here?
That, that is really terms.
It's unfortunate.
I don't know, because I don't know if that adds property tax. I don't know. It, it's.
Kind of what I'm getting at.
Yeah, it's good for the city because it does bring people in and they have about 20 minutes to, 20 to 30 minutes to spend some money in, in the city. And I can tell you, uh, I, I do that often. There's places I would.
Right out of your driveway?
Well, not, not out of my driveway, but when I'm charging on the road at a public spot.
Just kidding.
Uh, yeah. But that is a question because there is something, uh, and I think one of the questions is about, uh, does, does this also apply to private restricted use, single-family home owners? Uh, where since the property owner is not restricted from collecting a service fee for use of an electric vehicle charging station made available to, it says visitors of the property. I kind of like the word guests of the property owner because you're not just visiting, stopping in and randomly visiting. Uh, you need to be an invited guest. And what that does, if some, one of my friends travels from out of town, stops at my house and wants to charge up enough to get home, I'm gonna let him do that. I wouldn't charge him, but if they insisted on paying me five bucks for the electricity, that doesn't make it a, a commercial charger. I think that's why that wording is in there.
Maybe it should be invited guests because we had a, a lot of people taking liberty on property lately.
I, I, I don't see it in this case. I've never had anybody come to my house. For one thing, my, my charger's online for me. It's, and when I charge, I don't go, it doesn't show private chargers. None of the apps show a private charger. You would have to, and a lot of them are inside garages and everything. I just can't see somebody pulling up and, um, using it. Well, mine won't even turn on without, but I think it just, it just says if, if I have a guest over and I let them use my charger and I charge them five bucks for the electricity that they use or whatever, that it's okay. It's not a, that doesn't automatically make it a commercial, non-conforming use. I believe that's why it's there. I don't even see that happening, do you?
Jim's gonna get a lot of friends.
Yeah.
Could you please stop?
I mean, does it announce that you're allowing some, another car to use your charger? On your app?
No, because my.
Then what difference?
Yeah.
It, it depends on your, your app. I, I was, I, I'm saying this in jest, but if you could stop, uh, restricting Jim from, uh, allowing me to charge at his house would be great.
Yeah.
But, um, no, uh, it, it does on your app.
Yeah.
Say that you're charging at the station. If you own a local charging station, it'll say you're pulling amperage, you're pulling whatever.
What if it's at his house and it doesn't make a difference because it's his?
And mine, mine does, yeah, mine does not turn on until 11 o'clock at night because the rates go down at 11 o'clock at night.
11 oh one.
So we get the, we get, I think we pretty much all get it though.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're the gas.
And I'm sorry I brought it up now.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, I can, trust me, I could really, I could really geek out on this because I, uh, being in the gas engine business for 27 years and seeing this big shift.
I imagine duty has some more.
What's that?
I imagine you might have some more.
Uh, uh, yes, but just grammatical, so.
Submit accordingly and triplicate.
Yep, okay.
I have a, a question real quick. Um, under the maintenance part, um, is.
Under the maintenance part, is there, I don't know a whole lot about them, is there like a state-level inspector that comes and checks these regularly to make sure that they're functioning properly, like gas pumps? Or who is responsible for inspecting them to make sure that they're being maintained and have contact information and all that?
That's another good question. It's actually, it's the owner's responsibility to maintain them. Now, I don't know what kind of requirements there are when you have a commercial charger. I imagine there are some, but mostly when you install it and it's run by, you, you subscribe to a service that posts all the information about that charger. And every time I charge with different apps, I leave feedback saying how it worked. And then I read that feedback, because if I'm going to Oklahoma and there's, I'm relying on a charger that has terrible reviews, sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't, I just go to the next one. I don't use that app. So it polices itself somewhat, it does have to be inspected, there is maintenance involved from that, it's part of that company. And everything's, you look at it in real time. Any problems show in real time. So it's, there are some, some older equipment out there that is not as reliable, but it's getting by.
Like BP, because we're talking about charging stations, so it's gonna be up to Mark and Marlin to make sure those stay serviced and online.
So it's, it's not something that our inspector's gonna be going out yearly or every six months and checking?
Once it's planted, it's no longer our responsibility.
Right. It's just like anything you install, it's up to you to maintain it. If you installed it correctly, we're gonna make sure it's installed correctly and everything's up to code.
And then once that's done and over with, it's then up to BP.
Then you own it, yep, and it's up to BP to.
Maintain it.
Maintain it.
However, safety and accessibility is our, the city's building code responsibility, and that's covered in here.
Yes, yep. Anything else on that?
So under line F, at the very end there, it says, for purposes of this section, charging means that an electric vehicle is parked at an electric vehicle charging station and is connected to the battery charging station equipment. Do we wanna add a line that says, and is actively charged, in use?
Yes.
I think that's what it implies, but it's probably better to clarify it that way. And that's my, that was my point where you wanted to add it earlier.
Yeah.
That's really where that's covered.
Yeah, so I, I removed the, the word "and," put a comma, and then put a comma at the very end, said, "and is actively in use."
Okay. Yep, I, I agree with that 100%. Duly noted.
Same as fishing, a hook in the water means you're fishing.
Yeah.
Yep.
And lastly, would you like to run down the list of grammaticals? It's up to you.
I could hand them over.
I could hand them over. Good luck with my chicken scratch.
Submit those, yeah.
We already.
We don't have to agree on the commas.
We already put our audience to sleep, so.
We trust you on the grammar.
Okay. But it is really something that is important. EVs are almost 10% of new car sales now, and probably will be by the end of the year. Their sales are actually going up, and gas vehicles are leveling off, so it looks like they are gonna be around with or without incentives. Just my guess, anyway. Talked about the plumbing, budget amendments, and ordinance number 211 is, if we have no discussion on those three items, we'll move to the public, the community input section of the meeting. If anyone who would like, you have the floor, we'll give you five minutes to tell us what you think.
Five minutes is enough?
You can head on. Okay, well, Marilyn Foster, 43, 60 South Fifth Street, Luna Pier, Michigan. I just wanted to thank the police chief for addressing and getting, now that spring is here, working on blight. So thanks for that. And I really just wanted to put in a big plug for the Freedom Festival coming up. And if people go on to the Luna Pier Erie page, you will see how to purchase raffle tickets for the traveling yeti. And it's really kinda cute, because Colette's coming out of the yeti. But it's a great deal, they're $20 a ticket, but if you know anything about those yeti coolers, and this is a nice cooler, a $20 ticket to win one of those is, is, is a great deal. Those things are very expensive. And so, and then also a reminder that we're doing raffle tickets, no, excuse me, auction down at the American Legion for the $500, is it $500?
$599.
$599.
Lazy Boy.
Product.
Lazy Boy gifts, I don't wanna call it a gift certificate, but it's whatever, a credit, a, a, you know, prepaid, that was donated by John Zop to us, so that was, that was very nice of him.
Hey, you can call in your bid too.
And I what?
Can call in the bid.
You can call in the bid. And we're working on a few things, asking some local folks, putting our banners up and things of that nature. So just a reminder about that. And then, as a private citizen, just an encouragement to remind people that April 23rd is the last walk-through at the schools in regards to the millage. And if, people should really familiarize themselves with this millage, the more I read, it's gonna cost us a lot if people don't get out and vote, so. But anyway, that's it. Thank you very much, great time.
Did you say April 20th?
23rd.
23rd. It's just April 23rd, yeah.
Thank you, April 23rd.
And it's at like 4 o'clock quarter, 4, 4:50, something like that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Little bit on the end of that, with regard to the fireworks. I'm sure you've all heard that Sterling State Park canceled theirs for this year, and we might be seeing some extra visitors.
But we need sponsors in order to get ours offset.
Yeah, we need money, there's no other way to say it. It's not gonna happen without money.
It's a great day for Luna Pier, it's very expensive, and we need.
Well, we need another.
Boots on the ground, too, if we, if you have volunteers.
$15,000, $20,000, so.
If anybody wants to volunteer for the day of, not before, I, I need volunteers for the day of.
Yeah.
You find a job that you can.
Even if they can volunteer.
Two hours.
Two hours, or just to do a trash ride forest, to drop it off.
Didn't we talk to the kids about that yet?
Not yet. I got some in mind.
So, um, we'll keep you posted, but now's the time to donate, and $2, we appreciate what anybody can afford, so.
The floor is open? Is he Freddie back there?
Uh-oh.
Seems to do Freddie.
Freddie needed my word. 10750 Allen Street. First and foremost, I wanna thank the council folks for what you guys do. And thank you, Luna Pier Police, for, again, working on a blight. It's been something that comes up often at the planning commission, so we thank you for that. A couple of things that we are working on, you know, you heard about the two public hearings that are coming up here next month, and of course, the one for the master plan. We did make a blurb in there in regards to the EV charging coming up, so any kind of change that you guys do, that'd be great to go into that. I like the fact that Mr. Huang brought up a surcharge for those who take advantage of sitting there. We don't want them to circumvent parking downtown, taking advantage of the beach while they're sitting there with their vehicle at a free parking spot, so that's great news there. Other than that, that's really all I have, and looking forward to hearing what you guys do in the future. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We won't, we won't ring the siren for you, but.
Is it us?
I mean, it's pretty close. I should've probably included this in Jim Adrich's sheet or anything. Should've probably included this in my, my report, but April 6th at, it's a Sunday, April 6th, at 1:00 to 5:00 at Mason School, they're doing the Heroes of the Hardwood again. It's for Bobby's Kitchen that does the pantry, the little box in front of the library. He does one in Erie, he pays the school bill for kids that can't afford, or are behind payments at Mason and's gone elsewhere, and paid several different, he'll actually deliver food to people if they really need it, and they can't make it to the box, or they're actually taking too much food out of the box, because it depletes it for other people, so he'll get their names and he'll actually deliver food. So it's a great charity, great cause. The Luna Pier Police Department, I think we aren't having anybody represent us, because I'm too old, and I might be out of town. But the Fire Department has four guys, and then my son's playing, he works for Allen Park, and then Tyler Simmons, who worked here for, worked here a couple of years ago, he now works in Warren, he's gonna play. So we should have, I think it's gonna be a Luna Pier police and fire team. I'm not, I don't know how good they'll be, but, because last year, Toledo came with a team that was stacked, and we managed to hold them off with the county team and a ring that they brought. But he's doing a little bit different this year, and he's gonna have the police and fire play together, so we'll all come and laugh and see how, see how it turns out, April 6th, 1:00 to 5:00. Donations, I think it costs to get in, but they accept donations and all that, where they can buy a shirt.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If anything, they'll be fun to watch, is that what you're saying?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
And I wasn't the oldest one there.
When my father was on the police force, they did donkey basketball. What a debacle.
Donkey basketball?
Yep, they brought donkeys in to the basketball court, and all the servicemen and women reworked them to play basketball.
They played worthwhile.
No.
No, they played donkeys. Floor's open, it's.
You would pay $25 and have, of course, it was a huge police department, but they would come and arrest you, and you could have somebody arrested.
Oh, that used to be fine.
Only $25?
Yeah, and then you get to, it was a judge.
All right, we digress.
I think with that, I think I'll close the public hearing, or public, unless there's any more. I, I see heads shaking, no, but last chance. Okay, I'll close the community input section of the meeting and move to council action. City Hall Plumbing. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the quote to repair City Hall Plumbing, sink, bathroom, and related, in the amount of, drumroll.
Right, I'll get there.
$7,243 from Leroy Plumbing and Heating Incorporated.
Support. We have a motion, we have support, any discussion? I think they'll do, do a great job, they had the best, you know, they had the best response, all of them. We'll go to a roll call vote.
Perry.
Yes.
Needing.
Yeah.
Boszloper.
Yes.
Huang.
Yes.
Waitman.
Yes.
And a gardener.
Yes, thank you very much, motion carried. Budget amendments, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the budget amendments as presented and waive the reading.
Support. We have a motion, we have support, any discussion? Do a roll call vote.
Boszloper.
Yes.
Needing.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Waitman.
Yes.
Huang.
Yes.
And a gardener.
Yes, thank you very much, motion carried. Ordinance 211, Article 35.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 211, Article 35, electrical vehicle infrastructure, first reading as presented, amended, and waive the reading.
Do I hear a support?
Yes.
We have a motion, we have support, any discussion? We'll go to a roll call vote.
Huang.
Yes.
Waitman.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Needing.
Yes.
Boszloper.
Yes.
And a gardener.
Yes, thank you very much, motion carried. Council input information, I remember where I left off, I'll start on this end. None at this time, thanks.
I'm good.
I'm good, thank you.
Also.
The only thing I wanted to make mention of, and I'm kinda playing catch-up here, because I wasn't here at the last couple of meetings, it was, last meeting, it was mentioned by Joy, after you guys voted on waiving the water sewer for the person that had the burst pipe, and Joy brought up about vacant homes in the city. And that was something that I had brought up last year, in talking about the blight ordinance, that we should also figure out a way to do some sort of vacant slash abandoned home ordinance that requires people to register, and that they would be required to winterize their property. And there's a lot of municipalities and cities around that are doing this, and it's just a way to regulate the, the buildings falling into a state of disrepair, so that they're being managed by somebody, and it gives the city a little bit more rights and clarification to be able to step in and do something if there's an absent owner, which I know we have a problem with that. But there's a lot of sample ordinances on the Michigan Municipal League's website, so I just wanted to bring that up. The other thing that I had in mind, we just talked briefly the one day about the information online about the Luna Pier Beach being dog-friendly, and I thought, when we did the budget, didn't we increase the budget for signage? I, I seem to recall that we did, but it might be a good time.
Just to replace the signage, I hear it was.
Okay, but that might be something before the weather gets warm and before we get into full swing beach season, getting new and updated and highly visible signs to place around on the pier and at the beach entrances that, you know, show pictorials that are easy to understand and say no dogs.
Yep, we can, we're gonna, between Parks and Rec and DDA, they kinda both own that area, we can, I think, take it up and, and, and working on it, because it, it, it was an effort we started, it sorta got stalled, and it is high time we, we pick it up again.
There was one other thing I wanted to mention, and this is something I brought up in the past as well, and I think I talked to DDA about it, I think it was Chobi brought up during public comment the last one, about needing crosswalk markers downtown by the post office. And I had brought up before about getting the little, the, the stand-up things that go in the median that a lot of cities with a very low speed limit have. That way, it makes people pay attention and slow down.
All right, we can look at that. I mean, we do have, we'll look at our plan, because we do have, the ones that are there are what's approved for that style street, but we can, we can.
You know what I'm talking about when I say the median things, like they stand up vertical in the middle of the street?
Yep. Yep, always good, and I am very much in favor of any, you know, a pedestrian-friendly city, that's really important.
I was misspoken when I said I was good. The, I know Frank wants to go. Must be late for, must be late for dinner. The lighthouse, and I know there's been some discussion on buttoning certain things down, yet I know that councilor Needing was, I think it was councilor Needing talking about tables and chairs, contact.
A while back, I, I was not able to procure anything, no.
Okay.
I mean, we're welcome to purchase from them, but, you know.
Oh, good thing you're the only ones on the planet. Anything else that, what, what else is needed so that we can?
The kitchen needs some, some finish work. It's funny you bring that up, because there is a change on the future meeting dates, the DDA will be meeting at the lighthouse at 7:00 PM. It is a public meeting, everyone's welcome. But just to bring some more focus on there, get our list going again of what we need to do, what it will take to finish it, and then we're.
To get the lighthouse.
And we're officially out of budget.
Yes, we spent, we pretty much spent everything so far, and anything else, we'll have to appropriate the money for it.
Okay.
Doesn't mean we can't do it, just we gotta appropriate.
Need to find out what that is, yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Good, good comments. Moving on to future meeting dates, Parks and Recreation Tuesday, April 8th, 7:00 PM with the library. I'm gonna insert one in there, the Easter egg hunt at Sid, at the Fire Department, Luna Pier Volunteer Fire Department, Saturday, April 12th, at noon. Flood and erosion, Tuesday, April 15th. Flood and Erosion, Tuesday, April fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five, seven PM, Water Tower Park. DDA, Tuesday, April twenty-second, seven PM at the Lunapeere Lighthouse. Planning Tuesday, April twenty-second. Uh, I believe that is at six PM with two public hearings.
So that might run into this.
So city council, Thursday, April tenth, seven PM, Water Tower Park. With that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion.
Motion adjourned.